I welcome everyone to the special session on impact bonds in education work. How do we scale this by the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation? My name is Anjul and I work as a research associate at CSR box. Before we begin, we have some instructions for the participants. Since we are using a virtual platform, you might experience a time lag. In case you get dropped out of the meeting due to a technical issue, please use the same link to rejoin. To avoid disturbance, keep your microphone on mute and video off unless you are asked to speak. And please use the chat box to drop any suggestions, questions or comments for our speakers. I take immense pleasure in introducing the facilitators for today's session. Starting with Ms. Prachi Windless, Director, Programs, Michael and Susan Dell Foundation. Prachi serves on the leadership team and is dedicated to transforming the lives of children living in urban poverty through better education and economic stability. The work of the foundation's portfolio reaches more than 12 million children and families. She is on the board of several foundations, investees and advisory committees committees to state governments and education departments. She is passionate about the area of data-driven education. Before joining the foundation, she worked at Boston Consulting Group in Gurgaon, India. She has also worked extensively in the telecommunications sector at Qualcomm and Motorola in the US. She is an alumni of the Indian Institute of Technology Delhi, University of Southern California, Los Angeles and University of Chicago. Welcome, Prachi. Next up, we have Ms. Safina Hussain, Founder and Executive Director, Educate Girls. A London School of Economics graduate, Safina has worked extensively with rural and urban undeserved communities in South America, Africa and Asia. After returning to India, she chose the agenda closest to her heart, that of girls' education and founded Education Girls, Educate Girls. Her efforts to bridge the gender gap in education in India have been widely recognized. She has been conferred with the 2017 Neeti Iog's Women Transforming India Award, the 2016 NDTV Laureate Paris Women of Worth Award and has in the past received the British Asian Trust Special Recognition Award from H R H Prince Charles for outstanding contribution in education. Under her leadership, Educate Girls initiated the world's first development impact bond in education, a proof of concept that ties funding to outcomes. Welcome, Safina. Next, we have Mr. Pranav Kotari, Vice President, Education Initiatives. Ever since Pranav graduated from H B S, he has worked on one singular issue, how to bring technology to improve learning outcomes at scale for low-income children. He is currently heading Educational Initiative Large-Scale Education Programs Team that works with foundations, governments and corporate CSR to help bring high-quality student assessments, personalized learning software and impact evaluation services. The company developed Mind Spark, a technology-based personalized adaptive learning tool that draws on a database of questions and answers to anticipate common mistakes. He led Mind Spark centers in the urban slums of Delhi and oversaw the machine learning platform deployment in government schools across India. Welcome, Pranav. Next, we have Ms. Abha Thoreda Shah, Executive Director, British Asian Trust. Abha leads the social finance work across South Asia. She is a founding member of the British Asian Trust and has contributed to its design and leadership during the startup years and now to its growth. She has over 15 years' experience working on strategic programmatic solutions tackling complex issues throughout South Asia. Her expertise and ability to leverage key cross-sector partnerships has led to the development of our flagship programs in the region. She has also been a crucial driver for the development of innovative social finance mechanisms, heightening the trust's entrepreneurial approach to philanthropy to meet sustainable development targets. Welcome, Abha. Thank you all for taking out the time to facilitate today's session. Before we begin, I would like to remind the panelists that the session ends at 6:05 PM and we will ring out a buzzer five minutes before the session is about to end. Thank you. I hand over the session to you.
Thanks, Anjul. Thanks for that introduction. And it's indeed a pleasure to be hosting this wonderful set of speakers today. All of them connected in a very special way to the topic of impact bonds. Safina can be blamed for starting it all through Educate Girls. They have been the pioneer of having done the first educational impact bond and it has almost spurred a whole set of activity on its own and a very, very effective funding tool. Pranav, through E I and the description that Anjul gave, I would add is that the core of a lot of work that we do in under impact bonds, which has actually become possible because of organizations like E I in India in education specifically E I, because assessments and target setting and goals is a core part of impact bonds and Educational Initiatives has pioneered that work in India. As a result, Pranav and Educational Initiatives today are working on both sides of the impact bond, both as an evaluator as well as a service provider. And finally, we have Abha, who has almost taken it up as a personal goal of hers to spread impact bonds across Southeast Asia, not just in education, but many other areas. And I look forward to hearing more. And all of us were chatting before this session, what are our top two goals out of today's talk? And I would say for all the NGOs which are attending the session today, if we can actually go back with an understanding of what this funding tool is and more importantly, what is the rigor required to participate in such a bond? It will be considered, you know, we've been able to share some of our experience. And for the CSRs which are attending the session today, if we are able to open our mind and, you know, consider this as a funding instrument for ourselves in future, that will be a big thing for us. It is a technical topic, so I will start with just very quick context setting on what impact bonds are, just to get some terminology out of the way and then we'll go to our speakers to learn more. So I'll be sharing a quick slide here. So this is how impact bonds work. Impact bond is a way to ensure that certain outcomes, which are agreed upon as important outcomes for the beneficiaries. It has at the heart of it the beneficiaries whom we want to, who's, you know, some outcome, whether it's education outcome or any other outcome, we want to improve and we almost want to guarantee that we deliver on that promise of that outcome for them. So the funding, on the funding side of it, we have two participants. One is a risk investor, which is an organization, which comes, a funder, which comes and puts up the funding upfront to say, if the targets, I have confidence in this instrument or in this service provider to be able to deliver the outcome. If the targets are not met, I lose that funding. But if it is meant, then there is an incentive to be had and a financial return if targets are met. And outcome funders are a set of funders who are saying that, yes, if the outcomes are achieved, we think that we will only pay if the outcomes are achieved, but we are willing to pay a premium if the outcomes are actually achieved because they are being almost guaranteed the outcomes. And there are several service providers in this mix which are delivering the intervention to the beneficiaries. And at the, you know, at the sort of like the bedrock of all of it is an independent evaluator which measures outcomes before and after for the intervention and could be against a control group to certify that the targets have been met. So it's a very tight transaction where we are putting the beneficiaries at the core of it, saying this is what we want to achieve for the beneficiaries. Someone who's saying, I can do it, others who, risk investors who are saying, I'm willing to take that risk and outcome funders who are coming and saying, I only pay if you get me this outcome. It is a, it is a somewhat new instrument globally, not just in India, very nascent in India. India has three development bonds, one health, the first one which was done by Educate Girls and the second one which was done by a consortium of Michael and Susan Dell Foundation, the British Asia Trust and others. And I think one more has happened very recently in Haryana. So there are three education, one in health and these two more being discussed as we talk. But if you see globally also, there are not many, there are 176 bonds which have been currently, you know, which have been tried, some of them have closed, others have not. Employment is the top sector in which they are being used. So India is unique in that sense, which has a disproportionate number right now of education bonds. And a large proportion of them, 66%, almost two-thirds of them, have led to positive returns, which meant the contract worked. And this has been our experience also in the development impact bond. There for the first two years, both years, the service providers have not just achieved, almost by three X have overachieved the targets which we had set out to达. So this was very quickly to get some G out of the way. We will now go to our speakers to learn more. I see we have more than 100 participants already and I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions. Please keep typing your questions in the Q and A chat and we will, speakers will take them as we go. So if I can just start with very quick introductions of your organization's connection with the development impact bond, the motivation to have done it, what were you, your organization looking for and what has your experience been? So if I can start with Safina and then Pranav and then Abha, that would be great.
Sure. Thanks, Prachi. You know, we, Educate Girls first of all works obviously for girls' education and we are just about 12 years old and currently we work across almost 17,000 to 18,000 villages. Full-time strength of about 1700 odd full-time employees plus around 14,000 team balika volunteers on the ground. So that's the kind of scale we've gotten to in the years. When we were scaling really rapidly from 50 schools to 500, 500 to 2500, by the time we hit like 5,000 schools in the first early years of Educate Girls, I was actually petrified. And I was like, are we just scaling? Like, are we just replicating? Or is there like result at the end of this, right? So the development impact bond, the seed was really the thought and I think a lot of social entrepreneurs who are scaling struggle with this, they're saying, am I scaling quality? Am I scaling result or am I simply replicating? And I wanted to find a mechanism by which I would know that even if I was working with the four-millionth girl, that I was still having results for her. And how do you do that? And that's when I came across a payment by results contract. And I thought, oh my God, like if I, if I, you know, I got paid only on results, then I would build it into the DNA of the organization to be a results-based organization, right? And through a long journey, we basically came to really structuring the first development impact bond in education in a country outside of Europe and US. And a lot of people told us, we are data poor, it's never been done, it's never been done in education all the rest of it. But it was a highly successful transaction. About 2015 to 2018 is when we deliver. And we delivered up to 92% of all our school girls that were found, were brought back and enrolled. And in terms of learning, we achieved about 160% of our learning targets over that three-year period. So it was very, very successful in terms of returns for our investor and the evidence had built for us and really what it did, you know, for the organization. And it was quite transformational for Educate Girls. Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, Safina. I think we might have lost Prachi.
Oh, we've lost Prachi. Okay.
Pranav, do you want to go next?
Yeah, so I just had a few slides as well. So very quickly, you know, for us, this is what the development impact bond on the ground looks like. It is funding 25 schools, serving about 10,000 children who are learning in the school during the school timetable with the school teacher helping them, but they're learning language and math and English. I think for me, you know, almost a decade ago, I was trying to think about, you know, an engineering efficiency equivalent in education, right? So normally we are thinking about output or inputs, but in the context of education, you know, what is the quantum of learning that has been absorbed by a child? And should interventions that are doing this for lesser cost or lesser time, we actually, you know, rewarded more because they are more efficient? Now, not everything can fit into a simple mathematical framework and obviously many other things that like socio-emotional and others that we may not be able to measure. But this was, you know, largely a driving sort of framework in terms of isolating some of the good practice. And there are many ways to measure quantum of learning as well. So earlier on, you know, when I was fundraising, a lot of people were focused only on cost per child and asking how much was their intervention cost, what is a rupee per child? And there wasn't much conversation on the impact. And then at some point, the conversation on impact happened, but then the conversation around how is that tied with money? And I think the conversation on time is still to be taken, right? So still today, interventions are not getting reported on how much impact they've added on a per unit of time. So I think over the next 10 years, if some of this data can be there through development impact bonds, I think it will help create incentives for people to become more efficient and deliver more outcome. The other thing was, you know, the S P G has 17 goals, but one that is quite often overlooked is number 17, right? Which is the partnership score. So in this case, this intervention is in partnership with the Pratham Infotech Foundation. They have, you know, relative strengths on being on the ground, having a field team. And so it made a lot of sense for us to partner with them. But we have also partnered with other NGOs like Nandi. We've also partnered with government agencies like the Chhattisgarh Infotech Promotion Society or Khyanda Pradesh Government. So for us, I think partnerships and allowing everybody to do what they specialize in is something that is important and that is part of this development impact bond. In this bond itself, I think we are able to look at a lot of data and, you know, make daily, weekly, monthly changes. So literally from, you know, a particular at the full program level all the way to a particular child, how much have they actually learned? Did they actually show up or not? Allows us to focus the implementation team to go where usage is not happening and also congratulate people who are doing quite well. And in the post-COVID, because this year we are not able to access the students directly, we have migrated a lot of this to devices that they can do from home. There are still very few children who are doing it. But we are still evolving and figuring out how do we continue this. So for us, this has been our journey in the DIP so far.
Thanks, Pranav. I'll go as we wait for Prachi and we deal with the effects of technology on panels. My name is Abha and I'm from the British Asian Trust. Unlike Pranav and Safina, I'm not, as much as I'd desire to be, I'm not running an implementing organization, but an intermediary organization, one which I helped found. In our early days, we found that we had this sort of unique role of being able to connect the diaspora communities of India, Pakistan, Bangladesh, Sri Lanka, Umbakas with the power of His Royal Highness' task backing to drive funding to a large part of the sector in those communities. But the quantum of funding you were able to drive was pretty minimal, at least we feel in retrospect. And secondly, grant was seen as the only tool to enable the diaspora who lived all over the world to engage with development activity in our country. And Safina was a partner, has been a partner from the beginning for the trust. And then she came and showed us a way to do it differently. We felt that perhaps this was a way to drive bigger change, a bigger funding quantum for our partners and therefore enable better outcomes. Those are the three motivators. You asked for our motivators, Prachi. And that's what motivated us. And it has been true, we have been, when we were running 10, 5, 6 years ago, we were looking at the single millions that we were raising for our partners. Now we are happily looking at the, you know, the 10s, 20s and 30 millions for our partners and we continue to be motivated to support the best nonprofits in the sector and be a conduit for that funding to be effectively delivering what they want to be doing in a way that's flexible, but also enables them to change. With all that caveat, it's not a fundraising tool and that's not why we do it. We do it because social change and partnership is at the heart of an impact bond, a good one at least. And if at best, an impact bond should enable an organization to trial and approach in the way Safina has done and then scale in the way they need to scale. And at worst, I would say it's when you do it just for fundraising because it never really works and the transaction doesn't even take off. So that's sort of our two bit as to why we are on the table and what motivates us.
Thanks, Abha. And I would want to come to Safina with the trial and error. Can bonds be used for trial and error or can they be used? Then do you think an NGO is ready for the scale up? What would you see with the starting points? And in, and you know, in that, I will also request you, Safina, to just talk to our NGOs who are here in the gathering today on what is the rigor required? What are the hardships, hardholds you took in your organization to make sure that you could actually deliver on the contract that you signed?
Yeah, thanks. You know, I'm going to quickly go through a, what in terms of what NGO should really think about? If you're thinking about an impact bond, if your board member says, "Arey, aapko bhi karna chahiye", you know, so-and-so Nikia. There's a lot of, you know, or a donor says to you, "Have you looked at impact bonds? Please, just like, there's a little checklist I'm going to give you and look at that." One, if you are a startup or you're an early-stage organization, please don't do it. Like, you know, tell people, "I'm still building my model. This is not for you." You must have actually an evidence-based model and at some relative level of scale. So essentially, as an NGO, you should have already stress-test your model in terms of generating evidence. If you haven't done it, then this is definitely not the route for you to go. And vo nek, humne ke evaluation karwaya tha, that's not it. You have to really keep, result develop hota ki nahi? It's not ki hum training karte hain, bahut achi training karte hain, hum dunya ke sabse behatar training karte hain. It isn't about input and output. It is about ki hamari training se the children's levels go up and you should be able to have evidence to actually be able to prove that. And I think that's the first piece. The second is, don't do it if your model, it's very hard to measure. You know, like a Black Lives Matter, everybody is talking about it or that's definitely not going to become a dibable, as they say. Everybody is like, you know, is this dibable or not? If your things and if your metrics are more about contribution, contribution to a movement, contribution towards an SDG, this is not for you. This is for organizations where you can actually, you know, attribution. If your M and D is more attribution-centric, and I can explain that if anybody wants to understand. But har adni alag tarah se kaam karta hai. A lot of NGOs are contributing to system that make change. Very valuable, very critical work, but it's perhaps not the best suited for a bond. The second is, you have to come to this from a position of strength. When you have a strong model, you have a strong evidence, you can't come to it from a point of weakness, "Arey, paisa chhiya to kar lete hain." That is definitely because there are severe reputation risks. You are naked in these transactions in terms of impact, right? To aapke future ke liye bahut jyada risk ho sakta hai if you don't think about it and if you haven't stressed test before. So don't do it out of any, you know, compulsion, as Abha said. But you must commit it because you want to make your model stronger or you want to, you know, strengthen your evidence or whatever, there have to be other reasons. Second, I think one of the most important things is that this requires a lot of, it's a performance-based contract. And if your teams are not bought into it, then don't do it. Make sure that everybody is aligned, internal stakeholders down to your field teams, because bad me, unki gardon pakade kaam nahi karva sakhte ho. You know, you have to really make sure that they are bought in. Otherwise, you're not going to get the result and you'll constantly be struggling later on. And obviously, and then be realistic when you are actually in there negotiating, be realistic about budgets, you can't do it as you did it before. You will require more resourcing, you will require a different kind of talent. You will require a deeper capacity building. You will need to make investments into a performance management system or new things, right? So just be sure that you committed with that kind of a lens if you are thinking about evaluating it. But on the other side, I have to say, after having done the DIP, Educate Girls became kind of like results obsessed, just ko bolta na, bilkulie, completely obsessed. And with a very razor-sharp focus, our performance management system got super tight. All our decision-making is now data-driven. And even our field teams, they'll say to us, "Hab to data se khelte hain", because they are playing with data to see different patterns, to see different things that are coming up. And what it did for us, because of that approaches, it has helped us to build perhaps the first predictive analytics tools for predicting out-of-school girls in our country. And we've really been able to do some spectacular work. And so it teaches you precision targeting, like Pranav was showing you a child-level data or, you know, a school-level data or teacher-level data. We have now been able to predict that 5% of villages in India have 40% of the out-of-school girls, which means it allows you that data to have very, very precision, very targeted for the highest impact that we can see. And I think the other way is, the other thing that we've already seen, it's really benefiting is, it helps you decentralize. At scale, it empowers your field teams a lot more. It gives them more power to course correct, to do the things they want to do, to be able to chase the impact for that girl-child versus everything being centrally head office-controlled, etc. So I think those are some of the things that I would say. So back to you, Prachi, with that.
Safina, that is, that's so true in our work with the Q E I D I B. Three of them are partners out of the four with whom us as Michael and Susan Dell Foundation, we funded them before, we worked them before. A lot of target setting was based on their previous history. And there were organizations like Jnana Shala, which we think are, you know, like best-in-class. We cannot improve outcomes any further. And they're overachieving their own targets, like, you know, 2X, 3X more than what the targets were set. And, you know, we go back and think sometimes, you know, where did we go wrong in setting the targets? Maybe they are too low. So I'll get Pranav to speak a bit more about the whole aspect of target setting because the evaluators over here are not just playing the role of saying whether or not you've met the targets, the whole target setting part of it is an important part of the DIP. Pranav, so if you could just elaborate a bit more, you already answered that question on attribution, that, you know, really, how do you attribute, but even before that, how do you set the targets?
Sure. So perhaps, Prachi, I'll just give a minute on an R C T so that it sort of helps understand the targets. And really to take a simple example, let's say someone comes to you and promises, "Aap ye powder pioge to aapka hai", "I suppose the height, kuch nahi se bhi thora to badega", so let's say, "Ab aapke pas 2000 students, you have 2000 students, aapne randomly unko do group mein baat ya, you have put them in two groups of 1000 students each, you have measured the height today. Half of the group, you've given them the powder, the other half, you've not given them the powder. You measure after one year, two years, three years, four years. If you find that both the groups mein jo average height hai, vo same hai, then you basically know the powder had no effect. Now that powder, I can keep saying, dekho mera powder piya to ye bacha lamba ho gaya, but that is just a natural cause, right? So what an R C T does is to sort of look at what is a control group gain in height? What is an intervention group gain in height? And the difference between the two is attributed to the powder or the intervention or the, you know, immunization or the education or whatever you have chosen to deliver. So that is just a very simplistic form of an R C T. Now, how much more should the powder deliver height? Kitna zyada badna chhiye so that it's worth paying for the powder, right? As an outcome funder in a DIP, you're paying, you're not going to be happy if the increase is not important enough, meaningful enough. So that target to achieve more than the control is the target setting that Prachi is referring to. Now, how do you set this target, right? Because, so first is, kya ye pehle kabhi wai? Is there anywhere in the past evidence of a similar intervention? Reliable education may, health may, if there is some past data, you want to collect as much of that as possible and use that as one of the inputs in your program. So that is one. Second is, if there are no such things, you can also look at the closest meta-studies that have been done in the closest fields and come with that information to do this. At a last point, you can sort of look at, because you are, you have data on how much money is being spent today in education, what is that giving you? How much more are you spending through the impact bond? And hence, how much more do you want the target to be, could be third? So you essentially collect and triangulate data from multiple sources and then you propose a target. Now, you have to imagine that the... Now, we have to imagine that the people, right? The NGO will want as lower target as possible. And then outcome payer will essentially want a fair sort of target because, I mean, they are paying a premium for extra impact, right? And that is a consultative process. You meet one on one with a group, essentially present the background on why the targets were set. And through that, that journey, you set a target. Now, target can vary. So it can be smaller in the first year because you are just ramping up, you're learning, you're warming up. And it can be larger in the subsequent years once steady state, operating conditions have been achieved. Targets can have different metrics. It can be number of students, which was the case for Safina. It can be on learning outcomes, it can be on, you know, disease rate, it can be on income. So it can be on a variety of different factors. I'll just pause there, Prachi.
Okay.
I think we've lost Prachi.
Do you, I think we've talked a lot on the NGO side and stuff. Do you mind if I cover a little bit on the CSR or at least on the, from a funder's perspective? And especially in today's, what we are kind of going through right now with COVID nineteen, how these instruments might be. Sorry, Prachi, I took the stage to, to address.
Please, please, sorry, I'm having a lot of connectivity issues.
No, that's okay. So what I would, you know, I mean, at Educate Girls, we've really been seeing, you know, COVID nineteen has, I mean, it's been terrible on the ground, right? In terms of poverty, in terms of patriarchy, the lockdown has also completely enhanced the whole, you know, regression in terms of women becoming more housebound, more tied to the household work. We think that now out of school girls might triple in the coming year because of COVID. And that's what past pandemics, Ebola, all of those other crises, all the evidence that exists shows that that's what's going to happen. That, you know, so, and what we're also seeing is, one is a possible tripling of the problems that we all kind of work on in terms of SDGs, but also shrinking of resources. You know, money is just super, super tight. And I think that's where instruments like DIPS, instruments like payment for results or success based contracts, results based contracts are becoming actually even more important for us to think about. Because nobody has excess money, nobody has money to just throw at a problem and say, ha, dekhenge, result to a jana chahiye or whatever, right? We can't say, kisir skilling se kam ho jaayega. It has to be about income increase. It has to become about job placement and retention in that job placement. So I think that COVID nineteen is an opportunity for funders to actually think differently about how they're deploying their capital. And for the sector to think deeply about saying, are we happy? And we can't actually exist just being input and output focused. That this is the time to really reflect and move the entire sector over to becoming much more results focused. So anyway, so Prachi, while you were away, I took the opportunity to do that.
Thanks, Safina. Thanks for saving me on that glitch there. But let's get to Abha to put the point of Safina saying, right? That Safina is making a strong appeal, this is a very good instrument, even more relevant in the times that we are, Abha. But, you know, you've been working on this for years now and you're doing the more difficult job of convincing a lot of very different types of funders on what, you know, first just explaining the instrument, the utility of the instrument, by the instrument. How are those, how do conversations go? What are the challenges that you're seeing? And, and you know, what can we do as a, as a collective, as a consortium to make that journey easier on the funding side? And I do want, Abha, to piggyback the question on the service provider side also, that do you see, you know, I think Safina and Pranav have scared everyone enough regarding what is needed to their use line. They have explained India can put many more DIPs in many more areas.
Yeah, India is full of many Safina who say, and so I never lose, I never lose faith. So the, the first, first is to see my role as sub, perhaps more topically with Netflix as the marriage matchmaker. Someone who not everybody likes, but is necessary to make the marriage work. And like marriage, an impact bond is as, as difficult, but perhaps sometimes as fulfilling for the future of our children, for our communities. So that, that is my role and that's where I come from. And yes, I spend a lot of time convincing people and why you. It's a really instinctive. You have to walk away from a conversation and say, I don't want to talk to you. But that willingness has to be backed by intent and the ability to make it happen. That's why I found it. You only do this when you come to this.
Almost the end. So I don't see appetite, but government transformation is even more complicated than NGO transformation. And therefore the learning journey is, is long for there, but the appetite is much, much bigger than I ever, have ever seen it.
Than you and I should talk.
Prachi, how are you doing? Are you okay? You had a question.
Okay, let me, let me unmute her. She is muted. So, yeah, Prachi, you should be unmuted now.
Sorry about my. I have two questions. One question was for an NGO which after the session thinks it's ready to participate in a DIP. What is their, you know, what is their track record, what is their history basis which they think they can participate in a DIP? And the second question is to CSR, which thinks after this session, this is an interesting, exciting instrument that they would like to participate in.
Yeah, so I just quickly, I think for the CSR, right? I think all of us have worked trying to raise money from them. You know, forever the conversation was either on a cost per child because they had certain million children that they wanted to take off. Or there was always this skepticism, right? Which is whether I'm going to get money or not, is this risky or not? You would see a lot of CSR managers are very risk averse, right? Who would give it to the PM relief fund, would get a construction done because it's very hard to aim someone for picking an easy choice. I think a DIP is a very safe choice in some ways if you are an outcome payer, right? Because you are only paying when some outcome is achieved as measured rigorously by a third party. So even if you have to pay five, ten percent more, it's just a very small premium for what you're getting in return. Whether you are presenting this to your board, whether you're presenting this to the CSR committee. I would highly encourage CSR managers to, you know, in terms of safety, internal corporate dynamics, peg it right up as safe as giving it to the government or maybe even better.
I'd go a step further. It's safety as well as being able to drive the change you want to make. If you're writing an annual report where you want to say the girls actually came out to school and were actually in school and their lives were significantly transformed. You can't actually say that when you just give ground to something and not go to measure it. So if you want to go beyond a case study based narrative, to a narrative which is data driven, naturally saying you are the change that you want to be. This becomes a very, very interesting tool and the ability to work with partners who are doing that, transparently doing that and not paying when they don't do that is a pretty big deal, right? For anybody who wants to make change. Within CSR, I think what people like us and others, people like Prachi are doing is leading. How can we make it easier for them so that we're able to provide those models that can be quickly picked up as against everyone starting from scratch? But that's also part of the proposition that Safina is putting there, Pranav is putting there. You can actually see the change. It's not just a case study anymore. And I absolutely love the fact that they're not doing case studies only in the work we do now.
Yes, so I think all of us together have made enough and more case for development impact bonds as a great way to have impact, to scale impact. With tried and tested pilots, we have people here who actually done R C's on their interventions before they went in for such a financing instrument. It is a way for us as a sector to consolidate and collaborate towards more focused and more well-defined outcomes such that the service providers can focus on things that matter. And it is a great way for us to be able to help in the times of COVID like Safina is saying because every single dollar matters and, you know, if you can increase the efficiency on every single dollar, we have actually that many more dollars in the sector. So there are, there are, there's every reason and there is, and there is a lot of information also, I would say, out there. BAT, British Asia Trust, Educate Girls, our, our, our foundation, our website, many others. There's a lot of information out there. Please, please reach out to any of us. There are more questions. But more importantly, go back and get serious about impact before we start thinking about scaling it. Thank you so very much and apologies for all the connectivity issues at my end. I really enjoyed the conversation today.